I'm gonna call this meeting to order, please stand to salute the nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In attendance this evening are supervisors Fisher, Agizio, Cassiola, Fleer, and Barney. In addition, township manager Don Genuso, Jack King, Director of Planning and Assistant Township Manager, Sean Bukowinski, Chief of Police, Bill Bodorff, Director of Public Works, Fire Chief Noel McMillan, Engineer Dan Dizeroth of Gateway Engineers, and Township Solicitor Attorney Gretchen Moore. Comments will be taken at this time for any item to be voted on by the board that appears on the agenda. General township comments or questions will be addressed before the close of the meeting. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. We'll do quick announcements quickly. The Historical Society will hold their meeting on Wednesday, May eighteenth at seven PM in the meeting room of the municipal building. They will have a guest speaker, Tim Barnes, who will share stories of his interactions with one of Cecil Township's most famous murderers, Hatchet Jack. I wouldn't be able to sleep at night after that one. The Cecil Township Parks and Recreation Board will sponsor Touch a Truck on Saturday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, from eleven AM to two PM. The event is open to the public. Jordan Tax Service will be here, May nineteenth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first. First up is discussion items. Number one, Dan, an update on the Public Works Building.
Good evening, everybody. The, um, just, just as a brief a- update on the Public Works Building. Just wanna call the plan up here real quick. Number one, the grading contract that's being done by Stuart right now. He's actually out there working again, much more favorable conditions in the fall, things are drying out. He's being able to make some progress. So the pond, which is shown here in the back of the pad, is nearly, nearly complete. They're working on some storm piping now. We expect this work to accelerate as the weather improves and we start to get longer days and so forth. So Stuart's on track and moving forward. Relative to the actual bit of the project, the advertisement is already in the paper. The plans will be available to bidders here tomorrow. There's a pre-bid meeting scheduled for next Tuesday here at the Township Building at ten AM. And the opening of the bids is scheduled for May twenty-sixth at ten thirty AM. And then we would look to give the board advice in June to, to move forward. If you recall, what we're doing is we're bidding the general contracting work for the project. What this means is that the contractor will be able to have the ability to buy the premade building. And then we will follow up with contracts to be available very quickly for the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing parts of the building. At the same time, we're bidding the general work. We're actually bidding the finishing of the site work, which is essentially bringing in the sanitary sewer and the water line and the other utilities up to and to be ready for the building when the construction starts. That's the update on the building, if anybody has any questions.
Dan, weren't we gonna get some bids on them sheds for outside storage?
We, we will, Ron. We will, that's a part of it, yes.
Okay.
Put that in. Any other questions on that?
Sounds good.
Okay, just, I wanted to bring up to the board tonight, it's not a, not a real, it's, it's not an interesting subject, to say the least. But it's, it's pretty important. This is about the Township's Pollution Reduction Plan. And I just wanted to remind the board about this, give you an overview. This is a township map that's sort of divided into watersheds. And if you look at this black line through here, this is the Miller's Run watershed. If you recall, we have a project jointly to work with Pendot on taking care of the requirements of the Pollution Reduction Plan by them doing stream improvements through Miller's Run Park. That, they've given us agreements, they've shown us some plans. They are planning to do that work with, at least within the next year, to, to comply with the, the requirements of our permit, which are to complete the, the PRP plans within a certain time period, which is the spring of next year, I don't have the exact date. But so that, that'll take care of Miller's Run, more, more to be seen on that in terms of details and finalizing all that stuff. But what I wanted to point out, the rest of the township is covered in what we call the Middle Sartius Creek area. These, these areas with, with crosshatches are what we call urbanized areas. Everything outside of the urbanized area is not subject to the permit. So all the area in white is, I'll, I'll say for the better part, not, not subject to pollution reduction, but the areas in crosshatch red are. So the DEP and their directive is saying we have to do projects within the Middle Sartius Creek watershed also. We have about a, a little bit less than three hundred feet of stream that we need to improve within this watershed. There's not a whole lot out there in terms of available places to do the work, especially on township property. There are very few, or they're really, I'm, I'm not aware of anything within this area that the township itself would control, other than maybe Lawrence Park that we have a little bit of area, but there's not a stream there. So you need a pro- a piece of property that has a stream and you do stream bank restoration on it like they're gonna do on the park here. So two things I wanted to point out to the board, we have to find a project. So if, if you can think about anywhere that, and I'll talk to Bill about this, where we could be doing something that could, you know, collectively be helping an area where there's township water getting into a stream that might be causing some degradation to the stream. And the second part of that is to consider in next year's budget, whether it's through any remaining ARPA funds, which I believe you can use for this. We need to budget about a hundred thousand dollars to do one more project next year. So I just wanted to get it on your radar screen. We're not out of the woods yet with this, this project over here. And, uh, again, it's time to think about it now and, and plan for it because you just can't turn on a switch and do these. A lot of times we have to get little permits to, to do these, the general permits to get them, and they can take a little bit of time. And, and of course bidding takes time too. So, that's it, if there's any questions.
Dan, can it be on private property?
Yes, it can be, but the, the stipulation is that if it's on private property, they have to be willing to grant a conservation easement, which means that you can't do anything to the stream anyway. So you just have to say that you're going to not do anything in that area. That's it.
Thanks, Dan. Moving on to resolutions. Ninety-eight, twenty twenty-two, consider the tenth release of financial security posted for the installation of public improvements for the Overlook at South Point Phase Six from five hundred ten thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents to one hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars, thirty-five cents, a total reduction of three hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars and ninety-four cents, as recommended by the Township Engineer.
This, this work at the Overlook has been done for some time, they just didn't make the request for the release of the funds. They're in the final stages over there of trying to clean everything up. It's been going and going and going. Every time we think they're, they're, they're ready and, and we're gonna be, we're gonna be able to bring this to the board to accept the improvements, there's a couple other things that occur. So this is just for release in one particular phase, we're still holding plenty of money over there on all of the phases. We're actually holding money on four of the phases that are remaining, and those are the ones we're gonna be bringing back to the board. So I would recommend this release tonight.
We're constantly getting complaints, as you know, about when they're gonna wrap up. Any idea when they're gonna finish up stuff and move out?
They put the majority of the swamp sewer work, which should be done here within the next week. The name of the back is, that's the, the sidewalks and sidewalks. So I would think at least maybe by June first, they ought to be done with, wrap it up and everything.
Everything?
I would hope so. I can, let me double check.
Well, I was just thinking like before next, it mainly is surrounding snow removal. So like, do we think that come next snow season?
Oh, yeah.
They will be done and out and we will have responsibility for all the roads over there? Okay, that's good to hear. Do I have a motion for this? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Ninety-nine, twenty twenty-two, consider approval of pay application number one in the amount of sixty-two thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars and sixteen cents to Slusarcheck Excavating Inc. for work completed on Coleman Road retaining wall project.
So, so the project is actually fully complete, this is just a partial pay estimate, we'll finalize the contract next week. The contractor did, did good work. And actually, we were able to save some money, believe it or not, we saved fourteen thousand dollars because we didn't have to do as much paving restoration as originally was estimated. So all in all, I would, I would say it was a very good project and a good contractor.
Yeah, good job.
That's good to hear. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. One hundred twenty twenty-two, consider approval of pay application number three in the amount of one hundred fifty-two thousand, forty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents to Youngblood Paving Inc. for work completed on Contract A, twenty twenty-one pavement maintenance program.
Yeah, Youngblood is back into town and has completed the majority of his work. I'd just say we'd be wrapping up everything with him next month to close him out. And it's pretty much as he agreed to, he would make us first in on his work. He's held up to that, and this is for partial payment of this contract, and we've rarefied it and recommend the payment.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. One oh one, two, twenty twenty-two, consider award of the twenty twenty-two Contract A Pavement Maintenance to Russell Standard Corporation in the amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars.
So this is for the seal coating, it's planned along South Point Boulevard. And this is the only paving contract that we really have out at this time. And we reviewed the bids and we would recommend the award to Russell Standard. They've done the work in the past several years under this particular type of work.
Do I have a?
So moved.
Have a second? Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. One oh two, twenty twenty-two, consider application twenty twenty-two, zero, 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 seven for the Elish Plan of Lot Subdivision Plan, location Tar Heights Drive, Cannonsburg. R-two, medium density residential zoning district applicant George Elish. The Planning Commission recommended approval on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, contingent upon addressing the comments from the Township Engineers' letter dated March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
All my comments have been addressed, just the description of the plan. There is one large parcel that's being proposed to be subdivided into approximately eight acre piece and a remen- a remnant of approximately eleven acres. It's located off of Tarhearts, Tar Heights Drive, which is a private road in this particular area. And there are existing homes that, that do come off of Tar Heights Drive right now. The lots, as, as they are proposed dimensionally, meet the requirements of the ordinance. The access to the second lot, as is being proposed, is through an easement that passes through Lot five-two to Lot five-one. And we really have no other comments, that's the description of the plan.
Any questions by the board? Do I have a motion?
Where's the easement gonna be?
What's up?
Where's the easement gonna be located yet?
Uh, it's where the existing driveway is. Mr. Elish actually constructed access to the property last year off of Tar Heights. He put a pipe in here, Ron, and put a, put a driveway across. Got a stream permit to cross the stream, so he crossed the stream. Both lots are gonna obtain access through here. The easement's gonna come up through here, and you'll have access to this lot right here. And this lot will also have access off of this particular drive.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. One oh three, twenty twenty-two, consider application twenty twenty-two, oh, oh, twelve for the Alto Piano Phase Nine Revised Lot, nine nineteen through nine thirty-one subdivision plan. Location Skyline Drive, Cannonsburg, R-one, low density residential zoning district applicant Graziani Homes. The Planning Commission recommended approval on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
It's been a while since we've seen one of these plans, but if the board recalls, all of the roads are, are built in Alto Piano and completed. This is just the subdivision of lots, Mr. Graziani left them in large tracts before deciding, and, and actually takes them down either a couple lots at a time or, or, or just maybe one lot at a time. But in this case, there's a number of diff- lots that are being subdivided. They're all in accordance with the master plan that was developed for this plan, which was a PRD. And we have no, no comments, they've addressed all of our technical comments. The plan's in order for your consideration.
No.
I believe it was.
I don't think so.
I remember it was a top lot there and some sort of recreation. Originally it was a PRD way back when.
I don't think it's a PRD.
Oh, they have R-one, but I believe at the time that that was subdivided, our PRDs were allowed in R-one.
I don't know.
You know, well, you know, they're.
Yeah, I don't think it's a PRD, but I don't know that for sure.
It, it, it's actually on the plan.
It's, it says PRD. I can't see that.
No, no, that, that's correct. It, it's the same that was, Windsor Woods was developed when, when R-one was in the PRD. Okay. No better than me. Anyway, it's in accordance with the plan that was previously approved, the master plan for the development.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. One oh four, twenty twenty-two, consider a donation of five hundred dollars to the Cecil American Legion for the Memorial Day service to be held on Monday, May thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. We in years past have given two hundred and fifty dollars, but the Legion has been hit really hard with the shutdown of COVID. They opened their doors to anyone and everyone who wants to come that day, so I felt like it was only fair. You'll see later on down the line that we upped our donation for the fireworks and muse as well. It's budgeted for and we can afford it, so I think it's the right thing to do.
So that five hundred dollars is budgeted in six hun- six thousand dollars for civil and military celebration on our budget?
I don't remember exactly what the line item is, but it's something like that. We can afford it out of our budget though.
Right, well, that's what I was wondering, if it was, if that five hundred dollars was coming out of the civil and military celebration?
Probably.
Okay.
Yes, I don't remember the exact amount, but yes.
And what about the three thou- I know, I'm jumping ahead, but what about the three thousand dollars?
There's a separate line item for that. There's a separate line item for the three thousand dollars for the.
For the fireworks. So there's two different entities. And everybody's invited at American Legion for that ceremony?
Yeah, if you go, you can go to the ceremony and you can go inside afterwards. They have food and drinks for everybody who wants to be there.
Well, I was asked that question soon as the agenda came out.
Yep.
So I thought, I better get this clarified, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. One oh five, twenty twenty-two, consider a lease agreement with Toshiba Business Solutions for a Toshiba Studio twenty-five fifteen AC copier for the police department. This is a sixty-three month lease at, at a monthly rate of two hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-five cents. This is a CoStarz approved lease. Is this just to replace the one that's already there? That's what I thought, okay. I'll make the motion.
Do, do they have a rental purchase program?
You don't wanna purchase them though, because by the time they're, you hit the end of your rental, they're, they need to be replaced anyways, would you agree? Yeah, so then you're buying something that then you have to replace. It's, it's actually more cost effective for us for a machine like that to lease them and then have them service them and send them back and get a new one than it is for us to purchase them outright. I'm, I'll make the motion as, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. One oh six, twenty twenty-two, consider authorizing the Township Solicitor to draft and advertise a fire chief ordinance setting forth the creation, appointment, authority, and duties of the Cecil Township Fire Chief. As a lot of you know, we hired MAC in June of last year. And this is something, this has been a long time coming. You had the opportunity, MAC sent around, and I don't remember when, maybe a month ago, a proposed ordinance. Over the next month, we'll have the opportunity to, if you have any comments or questions, provide them to Gretchen. And then it will be formally adopted in, with the ordinance process, which is what, seven days? Seven day advertisement?
Yeah, I'll check, I think this one's a seven day advertisement, no hearing.
Yeah, so we don't need to hold a hearing, but it'll have to be advertised publicly for seven days in review before it's adopted. So we'll have, I guess, the next two weeks to work, to have Gretchen's office turn what MAC sent to us into like ordinance, you have to add the words like whereas and all that stuff to it. And then it will formally be adopted at our June meeting.
So in other words, this isn't really being adopted, this is just the ordinance for us to review after it's been drafted and.
Did you have the opportunity to read what MAC sent?
Yes.
Were you okay with what it said in there?
Partially, but I wanted more, know more about it, and I'd like to talk with some of the firemen also.
Okay, so you'll have the next couple weeks, but keep in mind there's a seven day adoption period. So it has to be, it has to be to Gretchen's office, and then she has to get it written into legal form, and then it'll have to be advertised for seven days prior to our June meeting. So I would just say like have those conversations in the next couple weeks and get any, and work with MAC to get any, you know, additions, changes, things made. We'll reach out, I'll have MAC reach out to the volunteer chiefs as well to have those conversations and kind of get things firmed up, and then we can get it advertised and adopted in June. This is a long time coming, we've been, you know, it's been kind of hanging out there for years now. I mean, it even started when we started the process with Jerry Ozog, and we really just need to clean some things up, and that's one of them. So, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry?
No.
Okay, four one. One oh seven, twenty twenty-two, consider the agreement with Ironwood and Wedgwood HOA for the installation of traffic control devices on Ironwood Drive. This is an issue that has been kind of hanging us, over us for a couple months now. Gretchen, did you, you sent out that to everyone, the formalized agreement? Did everyone have the chance to review the agreement? Does anybody have any questions about it?
I, I wanna make sure they have an agreement with who's over front you heard they're putting these in.
That's, that's part of the written agreement, is they have to get the easements for the.
And it's at no cost to the township, no matter what, they get ran over, anything?
Correct, they're paying for my fees and they pay for everything.
And, and they're not allowed to have Sean check license plates and stuff?
They can't get any information that they wouldn't otherwise be able to get under a right to know. So they couldn't get license plates under a right to know, they would not have access to license plates or speeding information. And the only information that they can have access to and it's specifically written into the agreement is information that you or I could get or anybody could get through the right to know process. And I just wanna make sure, because I see you guys sitting back there, that you understand that. Because I know that initially when they were applied for, you know, there was some comments and questions about what was gonna be done with the information, and I just wanna make sure you guys understand that they're gonna be up, but they won't, you will have no more access to the information than anybody else in the general public. And you're good with that, you've had the chance to review this agreement before we vote on it, okay? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Passes four one. One oh eight, twenty twenty-two, consider setting a workshop meeting date and time to review the future land use map from the twenty nineteen comprehensive plan. We've gone over and over and over this again, but we need to do it again. So we need to set a workshop to kind of go over some of the changes. Dawn, you've updated it for, or I guess Jack has, wherever Jack is. Where is he? Oh, there he is. Hey, Jack. You've updated it for whatever changes we've, we made at our last workshop? Okay, so do we wanna set a meeting? I know Monday's work best for everyone, hold on.
Maybe Monday after the zoning board meeting?
So what's that, the sixteenth? Is that what that is?
They meet, is it the eighteenth they meet?
Monday is the sixteenth, Monday, May sixteenth. The eighteenth is a Wednesday.
They meet on a third Monday.
Yeah, so it's May sixteen.
In, in May, right?
Yeah, the twenty-third. So which one, the sixteenth or the twenty-third?
Twenty-third, twenty-third?
You wanna do the twenty-third? All right. Monday, May twenty-third at seven PM. Is that, okay. We don't need to vote on that, we're just setting that date. One oh nine, twenty twenty-two, consider starting the hiring process for a police officer to replace an officer that is retiring as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. This is not an additional officer, this is simply replacing someone who is retiring in June.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass, you're up, passes five zero. One ten, twenty twenty-two, consider a three thousand dollar donation to the Muse Fireworks Display scheduled for Sunday, July third, twenty twenty-two. Darlene, to your question, this is a separate line item in the budget. I think last year though, we only gave two thousand or twenty-five hundred, I can't remember the exact amount off the top of my head, but the price of fireworks along with everything else has increased, and this is budgeted for. So that's why I put three thousand dollars on this agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. One eleven, twenty twenty-two, consider the Board of Supervisors' minutes from Monday, April fourth, twenty twenty-two, regular monthly meeting. Do I have a motion? I'll second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five zero. One twelve, twenty twenty-two, consider the general fund invoices from April first through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Seconded, moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Before we move into general comments and questions, I don't know if you had the chance to check your email today, but Gretchen had asked for the Han Road Agreement to be added. We would have to first, she's gonna explain it, but because of the twenty-four hour notice, we will have to first vote to add it to the agenda, then we will open it up to public comment, and then we will take a vote on it. Go ahead, Gretchen.
I'll move to add it.
Hold on, hold on, let her explain it, and then we can decide. I read the agreement, but I don't know if everybody had the opportunity to.
Okay, so, and I apologize for just getting it to you today, this has been a long time going back and forth with the developer. This is related to the repairs to Han Road itself, so this, this is with Traditions of America and the Township. We had the bridge agreement a year ago so back, this is the road agreement itself. They've been working with the engineer on the scope of work, we've gone back and forth for a while, we've come to terms. Dan, I understand they wanna start working ASAP, which is why I think we should do.
Yes, they do, we want them to start working too. I mean, very quickly for the board, the change in the scope is if you recall that we were doing base stabilization on that road and then we were paving it. There's a portion of the road that's unstable, which they've agreed to excavate. We're gonna install a very heavy duty fabric on it. We're going to then rebuild the road. So we're reconstructing, they've agreed at their own expense to rebuild a portion of the road that sort of changed conditions from the time that this project started to where we are today. Everybody's agreed on the specification, developers paying more money to do this. The, the agreement that Gretchen's talking about tonight is just capturing all of that in an. The agreement that Gretchen's talking about tonight is just capturing all of that in an agreement form. So I'm comfortable with it from a technical standpoint, Joe and I have, we've been back and forth on this for a long, long time, so.
Right, and I'm comfortable with it in, in kind of an addendum to the developer's agreement, which is similar to the way we handled the bridge repairs.
Then there's no tax dollars involved on this?
Correct.
No, yeah, the, the developer is...
The developer's paying for all the improvements, they're already bonded on this portion of the work. It's all, it's just, it's really just a change in, in a specification for a portion of the road to make sure that it's going to last for the long term.
Tom, you made a motion to add it to the agenda. I'll second adding it to the agenda. All in favor of adding it to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to open it up to public comment before we take a vote. Does anybody have any public comments specifically on this Han Road agreement? Okay.
Can I just make one comment?
Yeah, please.
I want to thank the Parks and Rec Board for the great event for this here fishing derby that took place on Saturday, and...
Hold on, hold on, you can talk about general stuff, we have to still vote on Han Road. And then I'll give you the opportunity to say whatever you want. So we just added it to the agreement, or we added the agreement to the agenda. Now we have to take a vote on the actual agreement itself. So can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the agreement itself passes five zero, okay. Now, before we move into, go ahead, Darlene.
Okay, we had a good turnout at the fishing derby on Saturday, and it was a great success. And I want to really thank all the sponsors and the donors that made it possible for all these children to have big smiles on their faces when they were fishing. It was a great, and the weather was perfect. Thank you.
Okay, on that note, I'll make a quick announcement. For those of you that have been following, we got those grants last year and the year before from DCNR and LSA for the connector trail for, or through, on Reserve Drive. We are working with Washington County Chamber to do a, not a grand opening, what's the word? A groundbreaking, there you go. There, it's going to be June third at ten o'clock in the morning, because we're actually going to start the project, which is super exciting. It's hopefully the first of many grants that we'll get for Parks and Rec in that area. So anybody's welcome to attend, it's June third at ten AM up at Klinger Park. Any other board comments? Oh, Frank, you wanted to do the, target the parking lot?
Uh, yes. As you all know, I'm involved in paving and working in different municipalities and boroughs. I've been seeing a lot of them starting to use their Federal Cares Act monies from COVID. And Supervisor Fisher said we have monies available that I think is long overdue, that we resurfaced this parking lot up near the tennis courts. So maybe Joe and Bill can look at that. I don't, I don't know if it needs milled or not. My concerns would be the approach to the bridge, the walkway, going to that bridge and then approaching Route fifty if we haven't just cut keyways or to think we need to mill the whole thing and maybe look at it, Joe and Bill, and prepare a quote. We can put it out to bid maybe.
Let's add it to the agenda. So Dawn and I were working on, we had to submit a report for the COVID money that we had gotten, and we do have about three hundred thousand dollars that we still have left to, that, that can be allocated to something. I think the parking lot would be an awesome thing to allocate it to. So if this board is okay, I'd like to add to the agenda authorizing Joe to get, to get bids to do that. So is there, Frank, is there a motion to add it to the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, it's been, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adding it to the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So anybody have any public comments? I'm sure that if you've been over to that parking lot, you understand what a terrible condition it is, and it is utilized during our Fall Festival and various events as a handicap lot, as Frank said. So it's important that we...
I would like to just speak to that right now. One of the things that we still have pending out there is this stream improvement project. And they were talking about utilizing that area as a work site for their equipment and stuff. Now, it's not going to be very long, but I just, you know, I'm not sure we want to do that, you know, and then bring equipment in there and have them staged from that location. It might be better off to wait until we do the stream improvement project and then schedule that for next spring.
The problem though is we keep kicking it down the road. That's, you know what I mean? And we keep saying, oh, we're going to do it next year, we're going to do it next year. So my preference would be to at least do some sort of improvement there. We do use it and a lot.
Yeah, Joe and I approached Youngblood about it, and they had no interest in, in doing it. They, they just didn't have the room in their schedule to do it, you know, a, as a change order to last year's contract.
Why don't we put it out to bid and see what the bids are? And then we're not committed at that point. If we, if the bids come in reasonable and we feel like it's something we can do, we'll move forward with it, and otherwise we can scrap it, we're not committed at any point.
It's not that much, I think Tom Robinson gave us a bid of what, forty-five thousand?
Uh, it was about, I think it was about fifty thousand dollars, right around there. So with the cost of materials, I'm guessing probably around sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars to, that we'd be looking at, depending on the, the scope that's developed for the project, so.
Let's, I'm willing to see what happens. I'm, I will make the motion that we put it out to bid, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of, of putting it out to bid, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes five zero, so we'll put it out to bid. We'll put it out to bid if, if it comes in crazy high and we decide it's not the right thing to do, then we'll scrap it. Okay. Uh, any other board members, go ahead.
Yes. Uh, last month, Jason Ortiz-Tai and Representative from Range Resources was to present a check for the grant money for the swings in Lawrence. Did we ever get that? He's not here tonight.
We got the money, they want to do a check, like an actual check, what's, what's the word I'm looking for? Like a, yeah, presentation. We're just having trouble coordinating everybody's schedules, we may end up just doing it at the park someday. But we will, it's not been forgotten. We're just trying to get coordinated with the state rep's schedule and range's schedule and on a night where we have a meeting.
And where will it be held at, up at Lawrence?
Well, hopefully, we're trying to do it here.
Here.
But it may end up being up in Lawrence or just another time outside. But we are still actively working on that. Because we are grateful, they give us what, fourteen, fourteen thousand dollars for accessible swings? Kind of like if you've been to Cecil Park, we have accessible swings in Cecil Park. That was a donation from Equitrans Midstream, we got a similar grant for Lawrence. So we'll get it coordinated.
Is that what it amounted to, fourteen thousand grand?
And the, the equipment's been purchased.
Yeah, that, we have the money.
It's on order.
Yeah, we have the money, they just want to do a picture. Anybody else before we move into citizens' general comments?
Yeah, I want to say something. There's been a lot of people complaining on social media about Mr. Pashu coming back to work, that we didn't advertise. Well, Bill brought him back because he's been here for how many years, Bill?
Uh, this is his fourth season.
Right, and he was just more or less laid off, and you just brought him back.
He's, he's a seasonal employee, does a good job, and, you know, if we have the opportunity to bring him back and he's interested, he's, well, he's more than welcome to, to join our, our crew over there at the park. Now, we still will advertise, in fact, I have to get with Jack later this week to advertise for a summer help for college kids, you know. So we still have that to do, we still advertise. But again, this is the fourth year that he's come back. Now, when we initially brought him in, that, that job was advertised, he was brought in under an advertisement. So we just, every year, he, we've asked if he was interested, and he would come back, and he's agreed to, so. And he's, somebody asked me about whether he was acting as a mechanic, and he's not. I mean, he greases the equipment, takes care of it the same way we would expect anybody else that utilizes Zero Steers, you know, greases fittings and stuff like that. But he's not pulling mechanics duties on, on any of that equipment up there, so, just maintenance, you know.
Thank you, Mo. Any other board comments before we move into citizens? We'll now accept citizens' general comments and questions. If you have something you'd like to say, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Here we go.
I, Stan Sadowski from Lawrence Fire Department.
I don't know, Jack, I don't know if that microphone's working.
Stan Sadowski from Lawrence Fire Department, the chief over there. I know you got the ordinance from MAC. We didn't see the exact one that he gave you, but we'll probably get a copy of it. Who do we go to just deal with MAC with it? Or do we talk to you or that lawyer there? We got two weeks to do whatever you, changes need to be made.
So you do have a copy of it, it was emailed out more than a month ago, it, it has not changed.
It didn't change, okay, that's the copy he turned in, that's what the question was. Now, if we got a disagreement with it, who do we talk to about it?
I would put it in writing, and you can, I would send it to MAC. You can send it to our board if you want to, you don't have to, but I would send it to MAC and Dawn, me and Gretchen. Or, well, we'll get it to Gretchen, don't overwhelm her, sorry. Yeah, don't send it to Gretchen, we'll get it to the solicitor, but you, please make sure you're including MAC and, and at very, the very least, me and Dawn Janusso.
Okay, I think that's the questions we needed to just get clarified.
Yeah, we were, I was going to have an email sent to you guys with kind of specific instructions tomorrow. I just want, didn't want to get ahead of myself if it didn't pass.
Okay.
Ed Beedia, twenty-two Birds Way, had a question. The CTMA, how do we decide who is on, goes on the board of the CTMA?
So board appointments to CTMA...
Can you talk to your microphone, I can't hear what you're saying?
Board appointments to CTMA are done by this board.
Okay, and say if somebody doesn't resign, but this board deems that they're not doing their job, how do you get rid of them?
You go to court and you petition to have them removed.
You petition to have them removed?
Correct.
Okay. That's the only way to have them removed?
Yes.
Okay, I was made aware of an email back in the late twenty twenty-one that was directed from Ms. Fisher through you to Ramel that the whole, they wanted the whole board to resign effective immediately. Now, if you're telling me that's the only way to get rid of people, what was that all about?
So people can resign if they want, and they can be asked to resign, there's nothing wrong with that.
They could be asked to resign?
Of course.
That doesn't take a vote from the, from the board?
If anyone chooses to resign, they can resign.
But the email also stated, if you don't resign, we're going to do this and do that and do this. Was that a threat, was that blackmail or...
So I think you're referring to discussions that were happening with the board pre-litigation in this case? Are you, is that what you're referring to?
No, what I'm basically referring to is pressure, well, I guess it all started with Patty Maury as far as this board was not happy with the way things went down with her as far as her getting fifty-two some hundred dol, fifty-two hundred dollars for work that she did and uncovered over probably a million dollars worth of funds that nobody knew were available with the CTMA. And somebody didn't like that she did that, so she was being pressured, and the board collectively was being pressured to resign because of this fact. That's what I'm referring to.
Okay, well, first of all, I know and I'm aware that you got a copy of the settlement agreement in this case, correct?
Got a copy of what?
The settlement agreement in this case, correct?
Yeah, but this is, this is two different things. I'll get to the settlement agreement after we discuss this.
Right, but my point is, under the settlement agreement, this board isn't going to respond to anything related to the Patty Maury issue, period.
Well, I'm not talking about the settlement agreement. I'm talking about an email that was supposedly generated from this board to Ramel to tell the whole CTMA staff to resign.
I'm not sure what you're referring to related to any directive to resign. If you want to show me something, you can. But I can tell you that this board isn't going to speak to anything related to the Patty Maury issue because, as you know, there's a clause in that agreement for them not to speak about it.
Okay, well, you're, you're talking about something I'm not really talking about right now. So what we're going to do with the situation as far as asking people to resign, because as far as I'm concerned, I think it violated the Sunsign Act, that's going to be turned over to the District Attorney of Washington County. We'll let him decide whether it was legal or not legal. As far as the Patty, Patty Maury situation goes, in essence, what was spent collectively between the CTMA attorney and given to you or your law firm was almost forty thousand dollars. Do you have a, is, are you disputing that figure?
So I will make one comment for the record. If you've gotten CTMA's bills, you'll know that in the month of January alone, they spent over thirty thousand dollars on legal fees. So that's their board, and you are free to go to their board, and they have no confidentiality clauses about not talking about anything?
On a February fifteenth meeting, they were, Mr. Ramel was asked directly how much money was spent toward this Patty Maury situation, and he said it was approximately forty thousand dollars.
That's a great question for their board.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a fact, that's what he, that's not a question, that's what he stated.
It's a great question for their board.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I mean, he already said the figure, so I don't need to question anybody, that was the figure.
That's, they're a separate and distinct entity, and the legal fees that they spent, you can ask them about.
But you got to remember, this, this, this situation was precipitated through this board specifically, Ms. Fisher, because of Patty Maury uncovering this money, kind of making things look bad, and now all of a sudden, we want to get rid of this lady who essentially helped this township, but now we want to take her to court because we want to get rid of her. So that's what happened. So after we filed the charges, and I guess you or, or your law firm collected eight thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars, is what the right to know act paper I received a few days ago said. So we're going to spend forty thousand dollars to persecute a lady that actually helped this township to get fifty-two hundred dollars back. Now, personally, I wouldn't do that in my own personal life, would you?
I'm not going to answer your questions, I'm going to respond with this. This board, whatever the number is, the number is, and this board you sent, said spent eight thousand dollars. If that board spent thirty or forty thousand dollars, whatever the figure is, that's their issue, and you can ask them about those questions. I stand behind, and I'm quite proud of the fact that this board spent eight thousand dollars to achieve what they voted to achieve, and then they settled the matter.
What did they vote to achieve because we dropped everything? Why did we drop everything?
There was a resignation. That was the, that was the result.
Right, so, so that was your end result that you were looking for, was her resignation, correct?
That's what this board voted to do, and that's what I went to court to do, and that's what this board ultimately settled on doing.
Why didn't we go all the way through and try to get back to fifty-two hundred bucks?
Yeah, I, I'm, as you know...
Mr. Beedia, if you have any additional questions, Ms., Mrs. Moore has been more than patient with your line of questioning. You're repeating yourself at this point. If you'd like to move on to something else, we will address that.
I'm not moving on to nothing else. I want to make a statement, then I'm done. First of all, I think you should resign tonight.
No.
Okay? Because if not, the DA will be looking into you. The bottom line is, we cannot use Cecil Township money for personal agendas because we don't like someone. That's taxpayer money, and that has to stop. That's all I have to say.
You're right.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Good evening, I'm DJ Johnson, President of the Cecil Township Volunteer Fire Company, number three.
I don't, you might have to hold it.
No, I'm not going to, I'll go, I'll move a little closer.
Thanks.
Um, in twenty sixteen, we started a project to build a new fire station. The current building is over ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight square feet. It has an engine room where the apparatus sits of approximately twenty-two hundred and eighty square feet. Our project was initially going to encompass building a, a structure of approximately ninety-five hundred square feet, one floor with a mezzanine consisting of twenty-five hundred square feet. In twenty nineteen, September... In 2019, September 3rd to be exact, your board issued a letter of support to the United States Department of Agriculture for a redevelopment loan to pay for the building. In late 2020, we were asked to reconsider or to consider moving our fire station to the Klinger Road location where the township building is being constructed. That was done by one of the board members.
That was a formal request from this board?
There was not a formal request. That was done by one of the board members, Mr. Cassiola.
Just to be, first of all, just to be clear, there was no formal request from this board to move your fire station?
I never stated that.
That's what the implication was. Go on.
As I was saying, we were asked to move two miles away and we felt that due to the fact that we have a coverage area of 12 miles, going further away from our main coverage area wouldn't be advantageous. Plus, we have no volunteers in the area of Klinger Road. On, in February of 2021, we were asked by the board to hold off moving forward with our project as the project to hire a new fire chief was put in place. And you wanted to get his opinion on the Klinger Road project or where the fire station should be placed in the township. On September the 8th, the board rescinded that request of 2021, rescinded that request and told us to proceed with our building project. Fast forward to 2022, and I have copies of all the letters present. In 2022, we've had discussions with several supervisors regarding downsizing the project to a substation sort of a fire station, something smaller. So we would go from four bays, maybe to three bays. And begrudgingly, our membership agreed to a 5,500 square foot building, which would be a total loss of 4,000 square feet downsizing to, including a small training room, meeting room. If not, we would have to have our meetings here at the township building. On March 30th, I made a formal request to be placed on the agenda for the purpose of having our loan cosigned by the board. As the board and the township are the primary funders of the fire service in Cecil Township. The USDA requires a cosigner when the funding is through a separate agency and not generated by your own. That was denied. We were not placed on the April agenda. I made the request again for the May meeting and we weren't placed on the agenda again. Now, we, on the two occasions, the September 21 and the, or excuse me, the September 19 and the September 21, both occasions, we were told, we were given support. We have a letter by the board, signed by all the then-present members of the board, to proceed with the project. We had your support. In 2021, we were told to go ahead and keep moving forward with the project. We've spent $128,000 on the project so far. Now, the building is 65 years old. The engine room was torn down after the fire in 1989. And it is, it's showing its wear. And it was also constructed quickly as we needed a place to put the apparatus and to get back into service. So we are asking to either be placed on the November, or excuse me, be placed on the June agenda or to have a vote. The loan that we're asking for to be cosigned, we have reduced the expenditures to 1.4 million that we're asking to be signed for a loan term of 35 years, 420 months, $5,014 a month, for a total of $60,000 a year. This USDA loan, the Davis Bacon Prevailing Wage Act does not apply. We save somewhere between 15 and 20% according to USDA estimates. We're a very busy fire station. We've run 128 calls so far this month, more than any of the other fire stations in the township. We need a substation. While we agree that, we agree, we've agreed to everything that the board has asked us to do. We file our monthly reports, our financial reports on time. We do everything we're supposed to do. We want to continue with the fire station on this side of the township, on this side of Route 50. We cover a large area and we would appreciate your support and we would appreciate being placed on the agenda.
Okay.
Wait, DJ, wait.
Let me ask you a question though.
Ron, hold on. Let Tom in that I have something to say.
If I recall though, whenever the township withdrew their objection to the building and said to go ahead if you want to, we were told at the time, you didn't need us to cosign?
No, that was never told, Tom, because the USDA.
That was absolutely told.
The USDA required us from the get-go to have a cosigner.
We did not know until two months ago, when we were initially emailed by you, that we needed to cosign. That is absolutely a fact that has changed. When you asked for our support, it was in support of building the building with the funds that you had received from the taxpayers over the years that you had saved. There's a big difference between us saying, yeah, sure, utilize the funds that you have put aside over the years for a building and asking us to take on a $2 million loan or now a $1.4 million loan in, essentially in our name too.
When we requested in September of 19, actually Solicitor Moore had mentioned that we had discussions regarding it being a capital improvement project. And money would, oh please, money would be able to be set aside because we agreed that the board cannot endeavor future boards with any.
We cannot bind future boards.
Right, can't bind future boards.
Correct.
However, with a capital improvement project, which this would be.
You're talking about two different things. What was asked of us initially was by your chief, Denny Birdie, who asked us to commit that we would give you the funding for the foreseeable future, which, to which your point Solicitor Moore had said, yes, we cannot bind future boards. We cannot guarantee that we will fund your department in the same way for the next 35 years. That was, that is different.
That was different.
That is different than asking us to cosign. Asking us to cosign affects our bond rating. It affects our loan capacity. It affects many things. So you're comparing apples to oranges. We supported the project when we thought that you had the funds to cover it. And quite frankly, you and I have had this conversation offline where you do have funds put aside.
Right, and we are contributing $800,000 to the project.
But that is not the, some total of the amount of money that you have put aside.
Prior to the hiring of Chief McMullin, when the fire departments were receiving a yearly stipend of roughly $180,000, that money was used for different projects from different fire, in the different fire departments of the township. They were paid for apparatus. When we purchased our apparatus in 2010, the money that.
Hold on one second. You saying you took your $180,000 and spent it on other fire departments?
No, I never said.
That's what you just said.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you really did.
When, no, I said $180,000 went to each company, roughly $180,000 to each company every year.
Right.
That money was spent by that individual company on projects, whether it was repair a building, whether it was buy apparatus, whether it was improve, whatever they were improving. So when we purchased our last piece of apparatus 11 years ago, the money that we received from the township during, for the yearly stipend, part of that tax money went to the purchase of that apparatus. The same was planned for the building. Part of the money that we would receive from the township out of the roughly $180,000 would be set aside to pay for the yearly mortgage.
DJ, the issue is, if you, we can't and we wouldn't tell you what to do with the funds that you have set aside and saved over the years. Although quite frankly, if I'm being honest, I'm speaking for myself, I believe that the taxpayer money should be used for the benefit of the taxpayers. But things have changed over the years. And you can't stand there and tell me that the township as a whole is getting the same level of service across the board, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365. Nobody is saying that we're not grateful for what you've done. Nobody is saying that we don't understand that you need repairs or some sort of maybe building in the future. What we've said to you is not right now. We need, we have other things that we need to address right now. And you're not asking us, hey, can we spend the money that we've put aside over the years? You're asking us to cosign a $2 million loan that binds us for, yes, you are.
1.4.
1.4 now, but a one and a half million dollar loan that binds us for the next 35 years. We, I'm not saying that it won't happen. I'm not saying that once we get this fire chief ordinance done and things a little bit more steady across the board that we aren't gonna revisit. In fact, I've had conversations with Chief McMullin where I said, look, I recognize that something needs to be done there, but we need to do 15 other things before we can get to that. That's just not a top priority right now. And while we understand that maybe in 2019, we believed that you had the funds to take care of this and you didn't need anything from us and we said, sure, but things have changed. And you have said, like, you understand that, you understand that that we need to give Chief McMullin our support and we need to get this fire chief's ordinance. So let us do that. Let us get Chief McMullin what he needs and get a real assessment of the fire service in the township and then have that conversation with your fire chief about what the right decision is for the township as a whole. That's the part, like, please don't take this the wrong way, but you're looking at it from Cecil. We have an obligation to, you're Cecil Fire Station, not Cecil Township. We have an obligation to assess the fire service across the township as a whole. And what we're seeing, we're recognizing needs to change. There needs to be changes made. And cosigning a 1.4 or 1.9 million dollar loan right now is just isn't, isn't in the cards right now. I'm not saying no, not never. I'm not saying not in the future. I'm saying right now, right this second, the first thing we need to do is make sure that all of our citizens across the township are being protected 24/7/365. That's what we need to do right now.
So I understand, just so I understand, that the board is not in favor of cosigning our loan? Because I have to, I have to inform the USDA of the development and I just want to make sure I have the message understood.
DJ, right now, I'm not saying never. Right now, this board has other things that we need to assess before we can cosign it. We're not saying no. We're saying give us time to work with the fire chief and to figure out what the township needs in order to have the best fire protection that we can for our residents. And then we will have a conversation. It may be in June, it may be in July, it may be in November. I can't guarantee you anything. And we've had these conversations, we've had these conversations over the past couple of months. You act like you put these requests out there and they were just ignored. They were not ignored. We explained to you. We need to make sure that we're not tying up funds in a building and then saying three, six, nine months from now, oh shoot, we have a really serious problem over here that we didn't know about and we already committed funds and are tied up in a loan that we shouldn't have done.
I also think.
We need to have the money.
Don't yell, don't yell, but we're cosigning, so it affects our, if you have something to say, wait, stop. If you have something to say, we're happy to hear you out, but please step to the microphone. If you guys can take out the loan on your own, then so be it, but we can't.
Because of, because we have no contract and no guaranteed funding that can be traced back to an entity like yourself. The USDA cannot.
DJ, 35 years is a long time.
Right, but at 2.5%, that's a loan that you can't even get.
Right.
And you can't get the term.
But can you honestly say?
And that's why, that's why we went that route because it was the best term without paying prevailing wage. When you do a project in the township, you have to pay prevailing wage.
We do.
We're not paying prevailing wage. We have a 2.5, and actually, it was 1 and 7 eighths when we started this project. It's now 2.5 and it's going to go up in July. We have to release, the USDA's been sitting on that money and allocating it to us. We have to tell them that they can release those funds for somebody else. So unfortunately, it's something we have to do. What my purpose for asking this is, we need Plan B. There might be a Plan C or D by now. But we need another plan to move forward with our station because we need to do something. That was why we were desperate enough to go from 9,500 square feet to 5,500 square feet.
And I would encourage you, we understand that. I would encourage you to work with Chief McMullin and come up with whatever Plan B is. That's what I would say.
Thank you.
DJ, one thing you gotta realize, I don't know who gives you your estimate on a building. This is the worst time to be building a building.
Oh, absolutely. I agree, I agree. And really, it wasn't so much.
I mean, our road department building, just the steel, went up $400,000.
Right, I agree, 100%. And you have to understand, I wasn't looking to say, okay, you cosign, we're starting to build tomorrow. We have, there's much more work to be done by the USDA. There's public forums, there are meetings that have to be held and comments and everything. This is just to keep the project going. As you said, Ron, with the amount of increase in price of steel and everything, and we've gone from a block-type building down to a metal-type building. And we understand the cost. And it's doubling, you know, it's doubled. And we understand that. And that's why we were willing, if we weren't in the position where the building, the engine room needs replaced. I wish there was a place that we could put the fire trucks, but there's not.
And I hate to even open this can of worms, but you're saying that your building is absolutely a repair, you cannot repair it?
We'd have to have it looked at again. Because the floor now is, again, the floor would need replaced. And I'm not sure if the part of the structure that's the weight-bearing side, on the right side, I'm not sure how much more it could stand because of the location and how it's built up.
I would just encourage you to explore all options. Look, if we had a money tree in the backyard that we could pull money off of and give it to you, we wouldn't have heartbeats.
The problem is, I can't, we can't justify, we've already spent $128,000. We can't justify spending any more money until we know for sure that the project, whatever the project might be, that the project would move forward.
Put yourself in our shoes. If you stand before us and want $2 million and then Mew stands before us and wants $2 million and then Lawrence stands before us.
It's based on need. And when the other, when any other department in the township, if it needs something, I'm not just talking fire, I'm talking about any departments in the township, if they need something and it's, becomes a desperate situation. Unfortunately, for the last six years, we were under the impression that we were moving ahead with this project. So the roof wasn't replaced, the air conditioners weren't replaced, none of the other components in the building were replaced. We had a $2,300 gas bill in January.
Why didn't you repair the building that you needed as you?
Well, the repair, we made repairs that when things broke, like when the garage door would break, we had that repaired, things like that. But we wouldn't put a new roof on if we were building a new fire station.
I can assure you, and I hate to throw Bill and Sean under the bus, but they are regularly told no as well. So like, I know this is turning into like a public debate and I know it's gonna be all over. be all over social media, and we're going to be the bad guys, but we have to recognize that we only have so much money to spend. And unfortunately, when you presented the project to us the first time, I didn't, and I can only speak for myself, but I didn't understand that the expectation was for us to co-sign this loan. My understanding of the project was that this was something that you guys were doing with the funds that, that you had received in the past and saved up. So we only can, we can only manage the money that we have. And right now, like I said five minutes ago, right now, I'm not saying that it may not happen in the future, I'm just saying, right now, we can't do it. We can't co-sign it.
Chair Person, Fisher, if we were able to do that building on our own, we would not even have to come to you. We're not bound to come to the township and say, hey, we're building a new fire station. We apply for the permits, we do what we have to do. If we had enough money to do it on our own, we would have. We are a separate, we're incorporated. We can do that.
But to some extent, but to some extent, though, you owe us a justification because...
We can explain and we can inform, but we didn't have to ask permission. And that's what I'm saying, I would have never, we would have never come to you if we weren't involving you, and there's a, there's a sentence that was written by Mr. Januso in that letter to the USDA about seeking loan from the USDA. Again, I'm sure that folks were, were advised that we needed you to co-sign. That's just too big of a factor.
It's not.
That's just too big of a factor to, oops, I forgot to tell you that you're, you're going to co-sign this.
Like, did we, you were on the board, did you think that we had to...
It's, it's a moot point now, but we would like you to consider.
I didn't think it. It specifically says we don't need you to co-sign.
Hold on.
I didn't think it, they said it.
Right. All right. Any other comments from the audience?
Rich Miller, 213 Woodbridge Court. I'm here with some of the residents from the Ironwood, Wedgewood Homeowners Association. We just wanted to take the time to thank the township and those who were specifically involved in the legal agreement, and we'd also like to thank the supervisors that acknowledged in the vote that we were trying to basically promote public safety in the neighborhood, so.
Thank you for being patient with us. I know it took some back and forth, and we had a little miscommunication last month, but thank you for being patient with us, and we hope that it helps your problem. Any other comments or questions from the audience? This meeting is adjourned.